Maurice LaRosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner here. Charlie Masterbirdy.
Here.
Andrew Obanowicz.
Here.
Lynn Scho. Rob Quaznicki. Ginny Higley.
Here.
Welcome to the board, Ginny.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's an emergency, fire evacuation. There's two means of egress. One is directly behind you through the double doors. Take a right at the bottom of the stairs out into the driveway. The second one is to my left, to your right. Take the first door down the stairs, straight out into the parking lot. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick understanding as to how we're going to conduct business. Excuse me, the secretary will read the legal notice. We'll ask you to come forward, state your name and address for the record. The board may or may not have any questions for you. The audience will have a chance to participate after that. If the audience chooses to participate, the applicant will have final say. And I don't have my other statement because I don't have my book.
Roger, did you place another legal notice? Okay, so it's the same legal notice?
Okay.
You want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Enfield zoning Board of Appeals. Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearings on Monday, February 29th, which is now May 28th, I mean March 28th, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of Town Hall, first floor, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2016-0201, Robie Realty LLC owner-applicant, nine and Gina Drive, MAP 082, Lot 56, I-1 Zone, request to allow a 10-foot year rear yard where 20 is required and a 10-foot side yard where 25 is required to construct a 2,800 square foot addition to the existing structure. Information on file with the planning office dated 17th day of February 2016. Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal inquirer, February 17th, February 25th, 2016.
Will the applicant come forward, please? Would you like to make the statement?
Yeah.
I'll give you a second. For the record, because Lynn Scho is not here, Virginia Higley will be sitting in as a full member. And as soon as the applicant is ready, one of our board members would like to talk to you.
My name is Todd Clark. I work for Ashelman Land Survey, representing Mr. Robie Staples.
Mr. Clark, if you would give us just a moment?
Sure. I'm going to be recusing myself from this application because I represent an abutting property owner and there may be a conflict in me going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want for the record, Mr. Chairman, to say that I viewed the previous hearing and read the minutes and I feel incapable of voting.
Okay, very good. But I do have a question for you because we have a predicament now. You only have four board members now with the recusal of Mr. Obanowicz, whereas we typically would have five. So with your understanding, you can either move forward tonight with the four members or table the application till next month where you would have five members. If you move forward with four members, the vote must be unanimous in order for you to receive your variance. If you move forward with it tonight, there's only four. If you table it till next month, you have five.
We would need four as well then.
You would always need four members to vote yes. But tonight, we have four members only.
We'll go tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just before the applicant starts, I'd just like to clarify what's before the board. The map that you had in your handout, this map that's up here, the applicant has incorrectly labeled the side yard and the rear yard. So if you go up in the corner...
What's listed here is the rear yard, it's actually the side yard and what's listed here is the side yard, it's actually the rear yard.
So what the applicant is actually asking for is a 13-foot side yard where 25 is required and is asking for a 12-foot rear yard where 20 is required.
Okay. Does that make the legal notice not correct?
No, because they're both less than what was legally advertised. So if should you choose to grant it, you'd be granting less than the applicant asked for. The original map, prior to this, was labeled correctly as far as the side yard and the rear yard. They're just, this one is labeled incorrectly.
Just to address that last comment, this is a copy of the last, the as-built site plan, the last approved drawings. They do show a 25-foot sideline here, 20-foot rear yard here, this being the front. In either case, I don't know that it matters a whole lot. But this is what we went by, the last approved site plan. And I think I mentioned last time, the underlying map is simply a scan of the last site plan, so. Be that as it may, as you'll recall, last month, we proposed a 2,800 square foot building that has since been reduced by a little bit over 200 square feet. That improved our setbacks a little bit from 10 feet on the other side. Now we're asking for 12 and 13. Just to refresh your memory, when this building went in, after a site plan review between the engineer and town, it was determined that this was the best spot for the underground stormwater detention area. That's how it laid out and was built. Now, come to find out, when Mr. Robie needs an addition for this building, it kind of boxes him into the corner. Aside from that, there really is not much difference from last month. It was suggested that we take a look at accessory building. Section 6.10 of the regulations is a little bit ambiguous. But we feel that it does state that you cannot put in a, leave an accessory building over the 25-foot side yard or the 20-foot rear yard. So we've pretty much settled in with this building as we presented it here. We supplied Mr. Staples with five copies for all the family members of the Pollock Property LLC. He has not heard any negative comments back. Mr. Staples has written a short letter to the town staff with those sentiments. Of course, it's a public hearing. If they're here tonight, they could speak. We did take a look at the grading and we've added cross-sections of the building. And what we've determined is there's no need for any grading outside of the building. You can imagine when they go in to dig this, they're just going to dig down for the frost wall, straight up, put the earth back in exactly as it was. So there's no further impact to the surroundings. As far as impervious area, it's a wash. We're taking pieces of the parking lot alongside the building and in front of the building. And the square footage comes out about 20 square feet more. We take a little, take the stoop out or a little bit of concrete, it's a complete wash. And that's the type of thing we'll have to address with the planning commission if we get that far. At this time, I'd like to entertain any questions you might have. Okay, he's got some architectural design elevations. What you're looking at on the view looking south, now this is if you're in the Pollock's cultivated field looking towards the building. This left half would be the existing building and the right half would be the addition. This view looking north is if you're standing in the parking lot with the existing building on your right. You've got a door in the front, handicap ramp on the front right of the addition. Again, there's virtually no...
Is it going like this?
No grading. Yeah, if you're, these loading doors are actually...
They're on the other side.
Hundreds of feet back.
They're over here.
Yeah, 100 feet back. So this is if you're...
This is the building, building. This is the new building. Your top one's right.
Yeah. This is if you're standing probably 200 feet away from the addition.
You're standing at the beginning of the parking lot looking down.
Right, yeah. And these are the loading docks and there's a, I don't know, probably 80 or 100 feet between this face wall and this face wall.
Right, but that loading dock is...
Oh, one's one side, one's the other side.
Is this way. That side of the building you're showing runs this way and the new thing you're building runs this way. Kind of goes like that. Not like that.
You're just looking at the centerpiece, right? Not the, not those two.
Well, I'm looking at what you have in front of me. You've got a loading dock. I get it.
Any questions on the board?
The previous map. Obviously, you plan on taking out all the containers that are in, let's think, right, yes, right where your finger is. Why don't you put the building there? If it's going to be a just a storage building, why don't you put it there?
To get in and out of this building, we'd probably lose too many parking spaces and we'd be in the wetlands buffer, which may or may not be able to done.
Yeah, but, no, that's a tree line.
No, right here. The wetlands, right, but you only need 100 feet.
They have to be 100 feet from the wetlands?
Right.
I'm looking at two different maps. I don't know, you can't tell from here. It definitely has enough space here to here, here to here. There's got to be more than 100 feet there.
Well, there's got to be a chart on your...
Well, it's telling me it's 100 feet from here to here.
That's the wetlands buffer. This is all regulated, yeah. Everything 100, within 100 feet of the wetlands. So this...
What is this line here?
That's the regulated line, right?
Right. The regulated line, the blue line 100 feet off the wetlands.
And so you got...
Well, then what happens over here?
This building is in the regulated area.
You just drew the blue line all the way down here.
Yes, there's wetlands here.
So your new building's going to be within that 100 feet?
It's going to be outside.
No, it's not.
The addition is outside of the regulated area.
Okay, just outside, gotcha.
Because he's measuring from here to here, not here to there.
Right.
I still can't, last month, you told us the door of this building is going on the 68-foot side.
Right. That's right here in the center. Center of the addition.
So once again, it's right there.
I don't, I guess. This doesn't give me what I'm looking for.
When we were looking at a possible detached building, one of the concerns was getting product in and out of the storage area. So I, in terms of the client, I'm sure it wouldn't be practical for him to go across the parking lot with his product.
What is it they're storing?
I have to...
It's mostly their repair stuff that they're going to keep in that area, which they have to go into another area.
The problem, Roger, he has to come up because I can't see him.
My name is Robie Staples, 1145 Enfield Street. In this area here... You're on. Hello? In this area here, they have repair people.
Got to hold it, there you go.
They have repair people and it goes in, the repair stuff is going in here, plus storage, plus storage.
Okay, but where, when I asked you last month where the door, if you were going to incorporate the door with the existing building, you said no. That you were putting in a overhead door, more or less, in the parking lot. That doesn't look like the view you're giving me now.
But then the fire marshal talked to me and I talked to him, that you can, 50 feet from here, you go in to the back of that building, there's another door to get out. And there's a 50-foot requirement for fire exit.
Would a roll-up door not be considered a fire exit?
No, I don't think so, no.
I believe it would. It's a means of egress out of the building.
But they're not entering it.
You'd still have to have a separation here, which make it, push it further over to the berm. And I'd need more space.
Say that again?
It would push the building away from this and you'd need more of a variance on this side.
No, if it's detached...
Yeah.
You need less of a, you don't need a variance.
Yes.
Because if it's detached, you can come within five feet.
I don't believe that's the rules and regulations.
What rule are we looking at?
Mr. Chairman, I think you're looking at a section of the regulations that applies to a smaller building with a smaller height. It's a smaller footprint. So this building is over the height and over the square footage of a building that could be five feet.
Okay. That would be like a shed or something like that. I would put it that way if they would approve it, but I don't think they would. So that's the gist of it. I've chopped the building down to, from 40 to 38 and from 70 to 68.
I guess the only real question I have for you, Robie, what is the property doing to you that's not allowing you to use your property? I mean, the only reason you come in front of ZBA for a variance is because the property is causing you a problem.
Well, that's really the only spot I can put this building without other big measures to do it. I have a handicap ramp here on the existing building. Actually, there's two handicap ramps to get out of that building. I can't move those. And over here, I can't put it because the trucks, when they come in, they come in and back up and go around to the loading dock.
Any other questions?
I have one, quick one. I didn't get that map, so it's probably on there and I didn't see it, but I was wondering if you showed the buffer between the two zones.
Between the two what?
The two different zones. Isn't one R-33 and the one...
Commissioner, I looked that up for you and the farms are in I-1 as well, so the, all the surrounding properties, so there wouldn't be a required buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and question four of your application. What difficulty or unnecessary hardship would result, not just an inconvenience, if the variance were not granted? And you stated the tenant will vacate the existing location.
He needs the space.
I need to understand how that's not a financial hardship.
Well, it's a financial hardship for the town because they won't pay taxes.
This board cannot legally look at a financial hardship. It must be something that the property is causing as a hardship. The property being too small for a building project that somebody wants to put on it doesn't necessarily make the property a hardship. It just means that the property is too small for what you're trying to construct. I just, I mean, you're saying the tenant's going to leave and I don't want a tenant to leave and I don't want the town to lose tax revenue from that. But if that's the biggest hardship, I can't legally look at that as a reason.
Thank you.
I don't think that's the biggest hardship. Moving this drainage that was required by the town before, which I think is one of the first in Enfield, is a sophisticated drainage. If I take that up in any way, you have to move it all down this way, which would interfere with this entrance coming into this parking area.
How does it interfere, Robie, since it's underground?
Well, I'd have to put them out of business in order to do that and they're not willing to do that. As it is, I'm going to be coming in here on weekends to get this thing erected and put up.
But you said that most of the people work from home.
No, just 20%. I gave you a sheet of paper from the president. That's only 20%. But those people also work in this building. There's a few from this building and a few from the clerical, maybe, and the computer people that work in that building.
And the town was the one that made you put the drainage in?
Yes. Your town engineer and Mr. Kabibow, I believe.
Do we have the file from the, for when this building was built?
I got them somewhere.
No, he has.
I don't have it with me, Commissioner.
Is that something you wanted to be aware of?
The staff report that I gave you, what we presented was that because of the wetland buffer on one side, the conservation easement, which was a requirement of P&amp;Z, and the galleries on the other side and where the loading docks were, those are things that run with the land that you could consider, if you were so inclined, to be unusual hardship and difficulty. The point you raised tonight about, well, is the property too small. It wouldn't be too small if those things existed, but in the end, you have to make that determination.
Right.
But when you purchased the property originally, those problems always existed. It looks like we worked around it to build what you built, but they were already there. It's not like they showed up and caused a problem.
I put them in the best spot.
However, the buffers have changed over the years. So in other words, maybe these problems weren't here before and they're there now? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, it got changed from 25 to 500?
The wetlands have been 100 for a long time. They were 50, but that was almost 20 years ago. I don't know, I remember, Robie, when you came in.
Pardon me? I looked at, this was built in 08, so these...
This building?
Mm-hmm.
I think they changed in 05, or 04, something like that.
No, it was before that, Robie. But, you know, it doesn't matter.
I was on the board when they did change.
Do we have any other questions right now for the applicant so we can give the public a chance to speak?
I just have one more. Is there any way you can expand on the other parcel that you own?
This part here?
Yeah.
No.
No, okay.
This is a driveway coming in. This, there's not enough room to expand anything. On the front edge.
Technically, it's one parcel. There are two buildings, but it's one parcel.
Plus, they need it here for their technicians in there.
And you can't go up?
Pardon me?
I said, and there's no way you could go up? It's another floor?
If I went up, I'd have to close the building and I can't do that.
Okay, thank you.
I can't put them out of business and I'm doing the best I can to try and help the customer out. And I really don't think that this will ever be used here. It hasn't since I've come in.
I lived in Windsor Lox for a very long time, an old county road, didn't get built up, go look at it now.
But it still would have a buffer, you know?
Well...
On both sides.
I don't see that. I went out to the property, you wouldn't have a buffer.
You'd see a berm on this side. There's a big, there's a big berm there. And behind that berm is a big tobacco shed.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Staples. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against this application? Step forward, please.
No, she has the regular mic, sir.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple Street. I grew up right near this property and my house is not far from it, although it is not within whatever the limit is, 500 feet or something. The plan I got, I don't know if it's the same plan you have, but that orange building shows as 68.8 feet on the north side and only 68.0 on the south side. I don't know if you noticed, it's not going to be a square building or if that was a mistake. One of the other requirements of the plans, anything for industrial that comes before, you have to meet the Article 9, which is site plan approval and special permits and procedures. And they're supposed to show any trees over 12 inches in diameter and there aren't any trees shown on that area on the north side or the west side. And I don't know honestly where his property line is there. There's a couple stakes, but I think that's where the building's going and it doesn't show those stakes on this plan, so I don't know what the stakes are, but... show those stakes on this plan, so I don't know what the stakes are, but the, there are a number of, there's probably at least six trees on the north side that are a foot in diameter that may be impacted with the new foundation, and also on the west side, there's even more on that hill. The other thing, I'm glad we clarified it's one lot. Your definition of a lot on page nine of your zoning regs says, "A parcel or plot of land shown on a valid subdivision plan approved by the commission and recorded in the office of the town clerk, or a single parcel or plot of land existing before the adoption of subdivision regulations by the commission, occupied or capable of being occupied by one building and accessory buildings or uses, including such yards and areas as are required by these regulations." Well, there's already two buildings on this property. I don't know what the rule is, but you can't put two houses on a lot, so I don't see how you can put two industrial buildings on one lot. And he's already got two, and he's adding on to another one, adding on to an existing one. As far as the underground structures go, I put a couple of these round under-drained things under my parking lot, at my apartment, my apartment over here on Russell Street, and they're modular. They're probably about two feet at the bottom and four to six feet long, so if he has to move this structure, he digs up the one end he's gotta move. If he's gotta move that building back into compliance, he takes the ones off the end and puts them on the other end, puts them on the south end. He's going to have to dig up the parking lot, but it can, it can be added on to and it can be moved, so even if he's got more drainage coming off that roof, you know, because he's got more, you know, impervious surface, he may have to add more underground storage anyway. So, they're modular structures. I believe he had told me there were three rows, so he may only have to move, you know, six or nine of those panels. And they just snap together, you know, and it's putting the gravel in on the bottom and so forth, but when he says the town required him to do it, I think what he's saying is, at zoning, when he went to build this, that's what engineering wanted on his original approval. I think that's what he's thinking. But, again, I don't see this as anything more than a financial. These wet conditions were existing beforehand. He's just trying to put too much building on the property. As far as the absence of the homeowners, or the landowners next door, their mother's very seriously ill, and they couldn't be here tonight, apparently, so don't use that as a indication they're not here because they still feel it, or they might feel it's okay. Talking to them today, they still had the same sentiment as the last public hearing, so that hasn't changed, so-
What section were you, 9-point what?
For the regulations, just, it says, "Any changes to an industrial property on your zoning regs," says that it has to, Section 1110, 11.10 of your ZBA regs, D, it says, the last sentence there, "Shall review all site and building plans in a manner consistent with Article 9 of these regulations." So, and that Article 9 is basically all those site plan review things. It includes landscaping and what the plan requires. I don't see any building designs or elevations, that's part of it. I don't know if you guys got that. I know there was a drawing he just showed you that showed from one side and the other, but I don't know if that's, you know, there's no square footage. If this building is not gonna be occupied by any employees, then is there gonna be a loading and unloading zone for their stuff that they're gonna store in that warehouse? They don't show, like, a loading dock or anything. What are they gonna do, pull up in a parking lot and just back up to that door? You know, and not seeing a plan of the door of the building, you know, I really can't comment too much on that, but that's, again, it doesn't seem as complete as it could be, but you guys, I guess, could, so-
The door's not there.
Anyway, I don't see it anything more than financial. And as far as, there's another building in that complex that's completely empty and not paying taxes. The old job building up right up in front on Moody Road, but, so it's not like there isn't something nearby that can't be used. You know, I don't know what the situation is of it, but, you know.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. Article 9 would refer to an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would be required next, depending upon whether you choose to grant the variances. So, in fairness to the applicant, I mean, all of those questions are excellent questions, but they would be part of the Planning and Zoning Commission review. If you don't grant a variance tonight, then he, you know, he wouldn't be going to planning and zoning, and most applicants do not, do not get into that level of detail just because of the cost involved if they don't know what the result is going to be here.
But part of the problem with that, Roger, and I'm not disagreeing with you that there is a cost, but you're asking us to give a variance to a project that more likely than not will change once it goes to planning and zoning, and it's very possible they could make a whole different plan, which would then not be the plan that we would be granting the variances off of.
Yeah, well, that is true. The, the only thing before you tonight is whether or not you believe that it would be appropriate to reduce the side yard variance from 25 to 13, so to grant a 12-foot variance and to reduce the rear yard from 20 to 12. And that's, that's the only approval that would, that you would be granting, and that would mean, as you've pointed out, any other proposal from here on out would be 12 feet from the rear and 13 feet from the side. Everything else is subject to review and approval by possibly wetlands commissions because of the substantial amount of wetlands on the site, and approval by planning and zoning. So, what you're acting on tonight would be, you know, somebody in the future could come in and, and design a, a building that took up that entire area. If we're looking down the road and they do away with the front building, they could end up putting the whole building, a bigger building in the rear and have the front something else.
Right. We're not granting a variance, I'll get to that after.
Yeah.
Would the applicant like to speak, final side?
Dr. O'Brien handled most of the concerns. I would like to point out that the foundation wall would overlap, so you'd have eight tenths of a foot further in the back than the, than you would in the front, so it's not an error, it's just a, it's an overlapping foundation wall. As far as number of buildings on the property, this is what had been approved, we're still gonna have two buildings. Thank you.
Any other questions, board?
The drainage system, she said, is four or five feet long. It's almost 30 feet long. And if that building sits on that piece of property where it's located there, it will not create any more drainage. I haven't had those calculated yet, but it's on parking lot now, you know? There's parking lot there now, so we'd be putting it with an additional this much, which that drainage can hold it. And two or three spots, five feet long, that's, that's not what's there. You can measure it, I mean, it's on the print. And I don't believe it's any problem for anybody, really. And there's no more space on the street. Those buildings have been sold, been open for a long time, no employees, no, I don't know about taxes, but these people are paying taxes, and they got about 100 or 122 people. That should be a consideration also, for the customer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I can't move forward with a variance when it's all financially driven.
I do wanna point one thing out real quick. If everybody looks at their map that is displayed there, I want everybody to keep in mind, we're granting a variance on a side yard and a rear yard. We're looking to grant a variance on a side yard and a rear yard, not necessarily the square footage that they're asking for, exactly. It's not the square footage they're asking for that would concern me the most. It's the fact that if you grant a rear yard setback or a side yard setback, it runs the length of the property on both sides. We're not granting a variance for a 20,000 or 2,800 square foot building. We're granting perhaps, you know, 10 years from now, a very large building. So, I just wanted to point that out. Mr. Mastbert, you look like you're contemplating. Speak to us.
Yep, I'll sit.
Oh, okay. Anything else, Maria?
No. You raised a very good point, Mr. Chairman, and I think that there's a possibility that maybe we could do a smaller building. But the setbacks are what we're voting on tonight.
I looked at this property in a lot of different ways, because if the town engineer was the one that said, "Look, you have to put the drainage in," you know, that could be something to look at, but at the end, I look at it, you know, the wetland, you know, two sections of large wetland areas, we could look at that, but all of this stuff was here. It all existed. And I, you know, just to save somebody money, you know, I just, we're not allowed to look at that. And I think we have to look at the fact that we have a parcel of land that's surrounded by wetlands, yes, but now we're looking to overbuild it, and I just don't think that's possibly the right thing to do. And again, it could, years later from now, become a very big project.
Right, 'cause then you could just build a parking garage, solve your parking issue, and build off the whole building in the back. I mean, I'm not saying you would, I'm just saying you could.
I just have a lot of difficulties with the project. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Is there any call drop? Yes, I have it already. Thank you. You stuck it there. I like your handwriting.
Oh, glad, good.
Reason for denial.
Okay, what is it? Financial hardship? I don't know how we have to rate this.
Board finds that it's more of a financial hardship due to the fact that other problems with the property preexisted, and has already been built. Any further building would be overbuilding the properties allowed use.
It really has to come down to the, the variance would be on the whole north side and on the whole west side, and we can't control that.
I'll put it there.
I will.
All right. Old business. Do we have any old business?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's further down.
Are you gonna give us that report that tells us what's open, what's closed, when it got done?
Yes, we're still working on, us. What we're doing is, rather than having five different reports for five different commissions, we're, we're building one, so I ask for your continued patience, we'll get it to you shortly.
Okay. Something else. Slipped my mind, Roger.
Mobile station. Weren't we looking at something about the mobile station?
Yeah, but I think they've already, we have a land use meeting scheduled for April. Could you make sure that it still happens?
You're talking about the joint board meeting?
Joint board meeting.
Okay.
Right now, it is scheduled for Wednesday, April 6th, 7 o'clock in the Enfield Room. Would you be sure that all commissioners of all land use boards are notified and to attend, and it's their opportunity to discuss land use questions? And I believe last time you came and Peter came, but you might wanna ask the town attorney to be there, 'cause one of the questions I'd like to bring up, I need the town attorney. 7 o'clock.
All right, any new business?
I'm sorry, damn it.
I think my recollection serves me that, following the last meeting, when Peter Bryanton asked the council leadership how they wanted to proceed, because they didn't, they didn't attend that first meeting, and I believe, as memory serves me correct, that they indicated that they, they wanted to combine the joint land use meetings with the council of chairs meetings.
Who said that?
I think that was the mayor, so I just, I'm just-
Didn't have them join, but our meeting is on the books.
Yeah.
And it's important that we continue to have it.
Okay, I'll round back to them just to make sure.
And if we need to get lined up for the next quarter, we can book that date then, but I don't, we will lose the momentum of why we had the meeting, my opinion.
All right. Approval- Approval of the minutes, February 29, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
I abstain.
Oh, sorry, abstentions. Correspondents?
In your package is a letter from Mrs. Mullin that she asked, that she prepared to the council, and she asked us to distribute for you regarding the Craig property. And also, there's the March 28 report from Maria Elsdell on behalf of Chris Bromson, giving you an update of Craig versus Enfield. Craig versus Enfield, ZBA.
Yes, I'll be attending that one. All right. I had a question for you, and I lost it. Recording secretary. Do we have one? Or not recording secretary, but a secretary?
Yeah, Lynn Ballard couldn't be here tonight. We are taping it, and she will be doing the minutes.
Just wanted to make sure. We'll be signing our document here momentarily.
I'm working on it.
It's neater than I would have gotten it.
I don't think it mattered tonight that you only had four.
Well, it always matters.
Yeah, no, I mean, I was wondering if you were going to do that. Most boards have always given the applicant the option of asking for a postponement.
It's not my decision to determine...
Right. No, no, absolutely.
The applicant would rather do. So we like to give them the opportunity. Well, while we're waiting for that, is there anything else?
Staff comments.
He just gave staff comments. Short and sweet.
Well, welcome, Ginny.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so let me try this out on you. Commission finds the variance request will include the whole west side and north side of the property, which could cause the property to be overbuilt. The property had the preexisting wetlands, and the applicant's comment that this is a financial hardship was found in his application.
Works for me. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Second.